Good evening. My name is Mike Valli, Superintendent of Schools. Just to explain, this evening today is a little different than any other meeting of the Board of Education, so I'd like to explain it. Tonight is the reorganizational meeting, which means that I am the temporary chairman until the Board elects a new president. So with that chairmanship, I would like to ask everyone to rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Now we'll stand for a moment of silent reflection. So this is an opportunity for the Board to reorganize, choose new officers, as well as it's many times we've talked about Board of Education being one of the last vestiges of true democracy, and it is a peaceful transfer of power, let's say. We don't have too many transfers this year with their two incumbents winning the election in May, but in essence, it is a peaceful transfer of power and a reorganization meeting. So we'll do 4.0, administration of oath to me, Superintendent of Schools, then to the newly-elected Board members, Kevin Davenport and John Taylor Rico, and then we'll move to 5.0, which is the election of officers. 5.0, election of officers. 5.1, President for the Board of Education for the 2022-23 school year. Do we have any nominations?
I would nominate Mike Sage for President.
Second.
Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Sage.[243.62][243.62](applause) Last part of the meeting, I get to transfer it over to Mr. Sage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Valli. Thank you, fellow Board members, for your trust, and thank you for the community. On to 5.2, nominations for Vice President of the Board for the 2022-2023 school year. Do I have any nominations for Vice President?
I'd like to nominate Glenn Jackson.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? All those in favor, Glenn Jackson?
Aye.
Aye. Now we will administer the oaths of the love. remuneration. 6.1, can I have a motion to approve the Clerk of the Board, Ms. Sandra Janet?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Ms. Janet? On to 6.2, can I have a motion to approve the District Treasurer, Carol Peck?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. On to 6.3, can I have a motion to approve the Deputy Treasurer, Beth Ulbricht?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 6.4, can I have a motion to approve the Tax Collectors?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 6.5, can I have a motion to approve the Internal Claims Auditor, Eriwan Bosse?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 6.6, can I have a motion to approve the Clerk of the Board, Proten Lisa Fenara?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 6.7, Sandy, would you administer those oaths? Thank you so much. 7.0, official undertakings. 7.1, can I have a motion to approve the bond limits?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 8.0, designations. 8.1, can I have a motion to establish the dates of the regular meetings?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 8.2, can I have a motion for the approval of the 2023-2024 budget calendar?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 8.4, can I have a motion to approve the official newspapers, The Lancaster Bee and De Pew Bee?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 8.5, can I have a motion for the official television station, Spectrum?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone? Which one? 8.3, I apologize. 8.3, can I have a motion for the official bank depository?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 8.5, is that all set? 8.6, can I have a motion for the official radio stations, WVEN, WXRL, and WGR?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. On to 9.0, authorizations. 9.1, can I have a motion to authorize designation of signatures on all school district checks with signature plates for Beth Ulbricht and Carol Peck?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 9.2, can I have a motion to authorize submission of bid notices as needed to local newspapers for Jamie Phillips?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 9.3, can I have a motion to authorize the District Clerk to open bids at the time and place advertised on behalf of the Board? In her absence, the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Support Services on her designated representative or her designated representative will perform this duty.
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 9.4, can I have a motion for the authorization to establish petty cash funds?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 9.5, can I have a motion for the authorization of payment of bills in advance of the Board approval upon approval of the warrant by the Internal Claims Auditor?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 9.6, can I have a motion to authorize the Chief School Administrator or his designee to approve attendance and payment of expenses of Board members and staff at meetings or conferences in advance of Board approval within the limits approved by the Board in the current budget and within the provisions of existing Board policy?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 9.7, can I have a motion to authorize the prior approval of temporary cash advances from the General Fund to the Federal Aid Fund? Warrants for both the General Fund and the Federal Fund will list each advance, General Fund, when it is given, and Federal Fund, when it is paid back.
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 9.8, can I have a motion to authorize participation in Bosse's cooperative bids?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 9.9, can I have a motion to authorize purchasing based on best value?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 9.10, can I have a motion to authorize purchasing through cooperative purchasing organizations?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 9.11, authorization to accept donations of funds for the provision of field trip services and use of district buildings for Jamie Phillips?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 9.12, can I have a motion to authorize use of credit cards?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 9.13, can I have a motion to authorize the hourly rate for off-duty security officers at $35 per hour?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 9.14, can I have a motion to authorize firearm carriers?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 9.15, can I have a motion to authorize Jamie Phillips to certify the district's payroll?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 9.16, can I have a motion to authorize processing of all budget transfers on Chief School Officer's approval per attached policy 5140?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 9.17, can I have a motion to authorize the Superintendent to apply for grants in a both state and federal?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 9.18, can I have a motion to authorize payment to non-Lancaster Central Teachers Association members who perform Schedule D and E duties at Schedule D and E rates per the current LCTA bargaining agreement?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 9.19, can I have a motion to authorize the Superintendent to approve contracts under $2,500?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 9.20, can I have a motion to authorize the Superintendent to approve bond issued change orders in amounts less than $35,000 prior to Board approval?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. On to 10.0, other annual appointments. 10.1, can I have a motion to appoint agents for the Board to oversee the investment of temporarily idle district funds, Jamie Phillips and Carol Peck?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.2, can I have a motion to appoint the Deputy Treasurer of Extra Classroom Activities Account for Beth Ulbricht?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.3, can I have a motion to appoint the Purchasing Agent, Jamie Phillips?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.4, this is our ECASB team appointment. Let's take a look. All right, so first, we need the Voting Delegate for NISBA Convention that is held October 27th through the 29th. Would anyone like to be the Delegate? Ms. Cohen, thank you. Would someone like to be the alternate?
I can do that.
Mr. Uteck, thank you so much. How about the ECASB Delegate Assembly Representative?
I'll do that.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. And then who would like to be the alternate? Thank you, Mr. Jackson. The Erie County Association of School Boards Budget and Finance Team Representative. Who would like to be the Budget Representative? Thank you, Mr. Davenport, and I will be the alternate for that. The Erie County Association of School Boards Legislative Team Representative. I'm currently on that, and I will continue unless somebody else wants to do it. And we just need an alternate. Can I have a motion to approve those appointments?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.5, appoint Audit Committee members. I'm currently on that Audit Committee. I'd like to stay on there.
I'll be with Wallace.
Same with me. Thank you, Mr. Taylor Rico. Thank you, Mr. Davenport. 10.6, can I have a motion or 10.5, can I have a motion to approve those Audit Committee members?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.6, let's see, we've got our Health Insurance Committee members.
I'm currently on that with Jill. I'd like to stay.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Spencer. Thank you, Mr. Taylor Rico. Can I have a motion to approve the Health Insurance Committee members?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.7, we've got our Food Service Committee members. Thank you, Mr. Uteck.
I'd like to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Can I have a motion to approve those appointments?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.8, we've got our Building Use Committee members.
I'm on that committee.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Is that just one?
No.
Oh, this way, we didn't have anything this year. I'll stay on that one as well. Can I have a motion to approve those appointments?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.9, can I have a motion to appoint the School Physician?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.10, can I have a motion to appoint District-wide Health and Safety Committee members?
I'd like to say so.
Thank you, Ms. Spencer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor Rico. And can I have a motion to approve those appointments?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Can I have a motion on 10.11 to appoint Chief Dental Officer Brennan Brennan?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.12, can I have a motion to appoint Acustar Workplace Compliance LLC for Employee Physician?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.13, can I have a motion to appoint members of the Committee on Special Education, the Committee on Preschool Special Education, and Impartial Hearing Officers?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.14, can I have a motion to appoint Fire Code Inspector George Pease?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.15, can I have a motion to appoint Independent Auditor for the period beginning July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, as dresser and muleki?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.16, can I have a motion to appoint School Attorney Harris Beach, PLLC?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.17, can I have a motion to appoint School Attorney Webster Zani, LLP?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.18, can I have a motion to appoint School Attorney Roche Brown McCarthy and Gruber, PC?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Can I have 10.19, can I have a motion to appoint Benard and DeMarco, LLP, as additional District Legal Counsel for tax tertiary proceedings as valed?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.20, can I have a motion to appoint Asbestos LEA Designee Michael Binyarsky?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.21, can I have a motion to appoint Insurance Broker, Evans Agency Insurance, and Policy Holder Utica National?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.22, can I have a motion to appoint Records Management Officer Jamie Phillips?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.23, can I have a motion to appoint Appointing Officer for Civil Service Functions for Dina Allen?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.24, can I have a motion to appoint Chief Emergency Officer Jamie Phillips?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.25, can I have a motion to appoint Financial Advisor and Services Agreement Capital Markets Advisors LLC?
So, second.
Any comments or question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.26, can I have a motion to appoint Residency Hearing Officer Michael Valen?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.27, appoint Data Protection Officer Michelle Ziegler?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.28, can I have a motion to appoint Title IX Officers Michelle Ziegler, Andrew Kufel, Jamie Phillips, Andy Crasman, and Karen Murphy Lee?
So, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 10.29- Ten point twenty-nine, can I have a motion to appoint, appoint Title IX Office Coordinator Dina Allen? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Ten point thirty, can I have a motion to appoint Civil Rights Compliance Officer Dina Allen? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Ten point thirty-one, can I have a motion to appoint Census Enumerator Andy Kufel, Andrew Kufel? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Ten point thirty-two, can I have a motion to appoint School Resource Officers as our law enforcement unit? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Ten point thirty-three, can I have a motion to appoint Supervisor of Attendance Andrew Kufel? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Ten point thirty-four, can I have a motion to appoint Records Access Officer Jamie Phillips? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Ten point thirty-five, can I have a motion to appoint Liaison for Homeless Children and Youth Erin Gannon? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Ten point thirty-six, can I have a motion to appoint Chemical Hygiene Officer Clifford Trapper and Stacy Lot? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Ten point thirty-seven, can I have a motion to appoint Designated Educational Official, or D E O, to receive court notifications regarding students' sentence adjudication in certain criminal cases and juvenile delinquency proceedings, Michael Fallon? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Ten point thirty-eight, can I have a motion to appoint School Pesticide Representative Michael Binyarski? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Ten point thirty-nine, can I have a motion to appoint Reviewing Official, Hearing Official, and Verification Official for the participation in the Federal Child Nutrition Program? Reviewing Official Tammy Augulera, Hearing Official Jamie Phillips, and Verification Officer Tammy Augulera? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Ten point forty, can I have a motion to appoint Post-Issuance Federal Tax Requirement Compliance Monitoring, Jamie Phillips? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Ten point forty-one, can I have a motion to appoint the Board President and/or the Vice President to appoint an impartial hearing officer per Board Policy 7670? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Ten point forty-two, can I have a motion to appoint Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Pupil Personnel Services to make all residency determinations? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Ten point forty-three, appoint a district-wide school safety team? Sadie, do we need a board member on that team? Got it. All right, so this is our, our... Got it. So can I have a motion to appoint that team? Anyone against? All right, all those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Eleven point oh, other items. Eleven point one, can I have a motion to establish conference reimbursement rates for meals at a maximum of $69 per day with receipts? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Eleven point two, can I have a motion for the readoption of all policies and code of ethics in effect during the previous year? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Eleven point three, can I have a motion to establish mileage reimbursement rate according to the IRS approved rate currently at 62.5 cents per mile? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. All right. That is the end of our reorganization portion of the meeting. I'm sure that was a very highlight of your day. So soon, yes. All right. So now starts our regular portion of our meetings. Twelve point oh, we have presentations. And I would like to recognize and thank legislator Tadaro for joining us this evening. And twelve point one, we've got Music Library Beautification Project, Mr. Richard Goss.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Mr. D'Angelo is my co-presenter tonight. He is on vacation with his family, so he sends his regrets. But we definitely wanted to take this minute tonight and recognize these students before they... Some of them are graduated and they're moving on to college in the fall. So we wanted to just take a second and reflect on this huge project. So in the fall of 2019, the LHS bands moved into a new space adjacent to the music hall. Having to move on the first day of classes, we had to postpone reorganizing our music library until the following summer. And of course, then COVID hit and halted all of our planning, and things were put on a long-term hold. During our hybrid year, we are fortunate to have some great students who took this project under their wing, and they helped us to reorganize catalog, label over 2,000 band selections, 500 jazz ensemble selections, 1,000 small ensembles, and another 1,000 solos. That is a lot of music. The students also had a beautification committee to help make the band appear more spirited and more welcoming. So I'm going to show this video. It's about, it's about six minutes long. So I don't know if you want to stay where you are, if you want to come out and have a seat and enjoy it here. It's put to the pictures of students and narration of myself and some students. And the music is provided by the Synth Sonic Band. The music we played at graduation is entitled Journey Through Orion. Enjoy the video. All right, so after, God, at least maybe five months of work on the jazz library. We still appreciate you. We still appreciate you. But the main library, people who are sunned here, there is honor, honor, my father, the Lord. Ready to do another part? Do you find the place one yet? Right. You're in this. You're in the house. Yeah! I'm in the high school band room, and I'm writing for a practice room that we converted into a storage room for lifelines, keyboards, guitars, those that, things that we use for our jazz ensemble, swing strings, marching band, and other groups. When you walk in, you can see we have an X, more than one shelf for ease of access. There's a census, a board census as well, and an upset store here. We also have our bass guitar and guitar store here. Keyboards are stored on these shelves that students built. And then, of course, all the accessories that are needed, pedals, and wires, and patchboards. And then more storage space up top that's made for the future. So most musical, we had trouble like storing all our modern vinyl albums. So we built this shelf to hold all that. And then, of course, we store all our lighting and sound equipment. So we built this shelf as well. Hi there. I'm going to take you into our LHS Bands Library that was turned, used to be the SCAD room, the Singing Class Executive Board, and now it's been turned into our band library here. We're inside of the old room, 143. And now I'm going to just first show you where we have some storage. And we built some storage, we have a custom-made shelf in this space to store paper products and storage boxes. Or I saw the log already, because we need a log. Right next to that, you'll see a couple of band cabinets. And as you can see, the students have numbered the cabinet. So you can, so in the library, the spreadsheet library, you can see it's in band cabinet number seven. It's number 1583, and then just, you notice, there's been these numbers here. Makes it a lot easier to find ones. If we go farther back into the room, you'll see we have our jazz library. And the jazz library basically has all our holiday music and then all our regular music, A through Z. And it's easily found again in our spreadsheet library. Over here, students have been working on our chamber music, brass quintets, and quartets, and trios. And then woodwinds, sax, jazz, quintets, quartets, trios, duets. And then woodwork choir and marching bands. And finally, we have a full panel. So you can see that a lot of work has been done by the students. And then finally, the big project, of course, was our band library. It is a cabinet, eight cabinets of music. So if I pull the cabinet out, that, I can find music very quickly. Say, looking for number 333. I just look right over here, and I find it, and pull it out, and then put the box back in, and music out, and go in and out of the band room. Or give it to the director and then out of the band room. So that's, that's how it's set up. The red is usually for holidays. The blue is like for business music, competition music, that kind of thing. So it's color-coded and labeled. It's so easy to find things. These students did this work over a year and a half in accordance with this, 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 all of our students, who have done such a great job of making this band library very accessible, quick to find music. So I believe at this time that those students could come forward. We have a certificate to present them. So all those students that were listed, please come forward. We'll call your name.
First, we have Vivian Cusica. We've got Sophia Malios. Am I saying that correctly? Now we have Samantha Alaska. And Anna Alaska. And then we've got Kaylee Hooker. Not here today. Tyler Heisey. And then we've got Ryan Heisey. Alex Falster. Nicholas D'Angelo. Peyton Potter. And Aiden Carden.
Let's hear for these students. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you so much. The final thing I'll say is, as I could pardon, is that music performances are great and glorious, and we get a lot of recognition from the audience. But when you do this kind of work behind the scenes, it makes the performances so much better. But it's just, it's, it's, it's sometimes thankless work, but we took them out to dinner at 99 Brick Oven. And once again, we thank you tonight by, in front of the Board of Education. Thank you very much, Mr. D'Angelo, and I very much appreciate the work you did. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goss, and thank you, students. That is very important work, and we really do appreciate it. All right. On to 12.2. This is our public hearing on our District Wide Safety Plan. I'm sorry, Jamie Phillips. All right, so this is our public hearing for the District Wide Safety Plan. The 2022-2023 District Wide Safety Plan Public Hearing. A draft of the 2022-2023 District Wide Safety Plan was posted to the district website on June 17th, 2022, for a 30-day public comment period. And tonight is the annual public hearing, fulfilling the public participation requirements for this plan. The draft is available on the Board of Education tab under the website, on the website, of the website, under District Wide Safety Plan 2022-2023 Draft. The District Wide School Safety Plan is in accordance with the Education Law 2801-A and Commissioner's Regulation 155.17, and is designated to prevent or minimize the effects of violent incidents and emergencies, and to facilitate the coordination of schools and school districts with local and county resources. and to facilitate the coordination of schools and school districts with local and county resources in the event of such instances or emergencies. This plan does not pertain specifically to COVID or school reopening in the fall. However, it does include a communicable disease continuing, continuity of operations plan, which fulfills a law that was passed in September 2020 that required a continuation of operations plan in the event that the governor declares a public health emergency involving communicable disease. The district adopted the communicable disease co-op and incorporated it into the district-wide safety plan this past April. Notable updates for the 2022-2023 includes the addition of cyber protocol in accordance with NICE and SAVE Act requirements. And updates were also made to names, contracts, committees, and administrators. The building-level plans are also being updated with the assistance of all terrorist safety consultants and the district and the building-level safety teams. This plan was reviewed thoroughly by the Chief Emergency Officer, Jim Phillips, and also by the District-Wide Health and Safety Committee on May 25, 2022. We now open the public hearing and invite comments from the public on the draft of the 2022-2023 District-Wide School Safety Plan. After tonight's hearing, the plan will be updated and with finalized information and submitted to the Board for approval on a future agenda. The plan will then be dispersed to local law enforcement and emergency response agencies and uploaded to NICE. Does anyone have any comments for our public hearing on the district-wide safety plan? Thank you very much. On to 13.0, correspondence. We have none. 14.0, approval of minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the regular session meeting minutes from June 21, 2022? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. On to 15.0, items from staff organizations. Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association? Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
Just wanted to quickly congratulate Mr. Sage and Mr. Jackson on their reappointments to their respective offices. And also to welcome Mrs. Henke, who is set to be appointed as the Assistant Principal at Williams Street School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avren. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? On to 16.0, board reports. Do any board members have anything to report?
I just wanted to congratulate the district, the administrators, the teachers, staff, and students. Graduation was incredible, the key center after the second year in a row. Come a long way when I think about for COVID and the aftermath and all. I think it was a really good celebration of the accomplishments of the students, so, great job.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any other board members have anything to report? On to 17.0, superintendent's administrative report. Dr. Valen?
Yeah, Mr. Sage, I have two things. Number one, I just wanted to let everyone know, the community and there are a number of different organizations throughout New York State. You know, there's the New York State Teachers Association, there's the New York State Superintendent's Association. And one of the associations that's statewide is ASBO. And that stands for New York State Assistant Superintendents of Business. That group, that statewide organization named Michael Sage, the Outstanding School Board Member of the Year. So I'd like to congratulate Mr. Sage, who isn't really the kind of guy to, you know, shout from the rooftops of his own accomplishments, but figured I'd do it for him. So congratulations to Mr. Sage on a statewide award. He won this award in June, but it comes with a $1,000 gift, basically, to that individual. And Mr. Sage hadn't, didn't know that he had won it, and hadn't designated a party. But he's decided to give that 100, excuse me, that, I wish it was 1,000. That $1,000 to Unified Sports. So our Unified Sports programs would benefit from that award and his hard work. So thank you, thanks again, Mr. Sage. Dr. Goufle's going to help me out here a little bit, just give you an update. Like I do every summer, I'd like to give you a little capital project update. Because we've been working at it for about two years, well, 10 years actually, but two, excuse me, two weeks so far. I was talking to Jim, the guy who runs the pony, which is the car that goes from school to school and delivers things. And Jim was like, wow, the second that school ended, all the things were rolling in and, you know, firing all cylinders to get things done. So I'd like to thank Joe Armini, who's sitting right there for Buffalo Construction. Also Steve Shorowski, our architect. We have a great team, and so I'd like to thank them for all the hard work. So like I do every summer, I just wanted to take a few moments to give the Board, the community, update on the capital improvement progress so far this summer. A bit of history, the Lancaster community passed a $20 million project in 2012, a $50 million project in 2015, and then a $77 million project in 2018. That's a total of $147 million when all is said and done, and that will be done in 2025. That's the most in Western New York. I'm so proud of what we've accomplished together, our team, our board, and our school district, and our community. And we've come a long way, we know a long way to go. But I appreciate the support of the community, which has allowed our school facilities to improve. I stated numerous times, in many people, in many of these board meetings, that this district is second to none with regard to academics, athletics, music, art programs, and the like. And we all want our facilities to be commensurate with that excellence, and we have a ways to go. And while we have a ways to go, I feel stronger than our focus on keeping learners safe, warm, and dry, and adding other nice amenities. When state aid applies is the right approach for our students and our taxpayers. So presently, we are in the middle of a $77 million project. This summer, the summer of 2020, we'll be doing a little over $12 million of necessary work on each of the summer, and in each of the summers of 2023, '24, and '25. There's already Lancaster community approval, New York State approval, and Lancaster School Board-approved plans to do about $10 or $15 million of work consecutively for each one of those summers. All of this work was voter-approved and follows New York State aid rules to defer the cost from local Lancaster taxpayers and minimize the state aid in every single way possible. As the Board knows, there are very small window that we have to do this kind of work. That work needs to be done in June, excuse me, July and August, where, when kids, faculty, and staff are out of the buildings. And each summer would make a mad dash, like I mentioned earlier, to do as much work as we can during the months. So this PowerPoint is not intended to give you an all-encompassing view, but just a glance at what's happening throughout the school district as we speak. So summer 2000 work at Court Street. You're looking at Court Street Elementary School, and the work that you see there was done about two or three years ago. All those parking lots and that center rotunda and the entrance to the middle of elementary school. Every one of our elementary schools received a complete redo based on the advice of our SROs and our emergency management expert, experts. This summer, the replacement of the parking lot behind this picture, you'll see in a second, and the driveway not to sight will happen. I think it's important to mention that because not everything can be done at the same time. There's this thing called maximum cost allowance. And so, for example, if the maximum cost allowance is $3 million at Court Street, there's a maximum cost allowance inside the building, and there's a maximum cost outside the building. So if, for example, if the maximum cost allowance is $3 million, we do as much work as we can on the outside, and then we have to save the other work for the next year or two years when it fits into the maximum cost allowance. If you fix, follow the rules and you need the maximum cost allowance, then you get state aid. Our state aid ratio basically is about 75%. So instead of paying for $100,000 for a parking lot, which Lancaster taxpayers bear the whole expense, we would, if we follow the rules, we get $75,000 back on that from the state, and $25,000 is borne by the taxpayers. There's going to be a new sign that highlights events and encourages participation to the school. There's a construction of a continuous sidewalk around the building and ramps to improve APA accessibility and to be in compliance. And as we did last year at Como Park, maybe some of you will remember, the 1954 Como Park Elementary School's windows, which were original, hard to believe. This summer, Court Street will have all of its windows replaced in the whole entire building. Replacement of all ceilings and lights and hallways, that's what they look like today. As everyone knows, buildings built in early and mid-1950s most likely have asbestos and other hazardous materials inside them, as there was a common insulator all over the country and probably the world. It's perfectly safe until it's disturbed. And when, when construction happens, it disturbs the material and it needs to be monitored and disposed of properly. And this district takes the ultimate precautions to ensure that it's done safely and effectively. This is certainly costly, but it's mandated and necessary in order to, for progress to occur. Flooring replacements in classrooms to remove old carpet also will be done this summer. The auditorium, the picture on the left is the auditorium as we speak, with no seats and everything else. Those floor tiles are being ripped up. The picture on the right is the covering and the shields necessary to abate that thing so it can be redone. Auditorium renovations include seating, lighting, floors, and finishes. And the next picture is a rendered drawing from Young &amp; Wright, Steve Shorowski did this one. And that's what basically it'll look like when all is said and done before the start, or not necessarily start of school, but, you know, September, October-ish. The next slide is a Court Street Elementary classroom. There's not just one, but many, but they're totally gutted and being done to make sure that our learning environments are top-notch for all our teachers and our students inside all of our, all of our schools. The parking lot that I mentioned, this is the one that's in the back. Now, this is where all faculty and visitors park, that's being redone, you know, as well. Over at Hillview Elementary, you know, I've joked in the past that Hillview is the bane of our existence. Hillview was originally built in 1947 as a temporary barracks to train soldiers from World War II. And it was built on a temporary basis and had a lifespan of 20 years. Well, you can do the math, over 70 years later, it's taken a considerable effort and money to make it permanent structure with an updated environment conducive to faculty teaching and student learning. 10 years ago, it was one of my first years as superintendent, and there was 3 1/2 foot of water in that basement. Original boilers were destroyed, and today, today it's in much better shape, and we're progressing nicely. Lot of work to do on this school yet, but we're progressing really nicely. Lancaster was the first school district in New York State to work with the state to utilize the Smart Schools money to increase capacity of the building. And the Board has hopes and dreams and goals of adding pre-K programming in more, even more robust ways in the future. This summer work at Hillview includes interior renovations as well as new classroom addition, funded by the New York State Smart Schools money. There's a continuous loop road around the building for emergency access, which is required and important for safety. There's site drainage improvements, auditorium renovations, including floor seating, lighting, stage lighting, and rigging, just like we saw at Court Street, and mechanical renovations, including piping and boiler work. This slides are a couple examples of the concrete gutter curb sections that are going around the school for the roads. The next slide is a continuation of that, just to give you a flavor, because it goes all around, south, east, and north. And this is, the next slide is an example of the retention area. All the water has to be done properly with DEC and make sure that all of the water is retained and distributes properly in the right directions, locations, and endpoints. Then the next picture is the, you know, where we stand as far as the new addition, the footings of the new addition. And that's going in on the south side of Hillview. You might have driven down transit and seen that. The next picture. Just making sure, yep, next picture is B-bar. Let me just keep on going here, buddy, because I might have taken slides out of that one map down here, but anyway. Are we at aerial? Yep. So aerial view, this is the south side of Hillview. You can see the construction happening there to provide access road around there, that thing. You can see the beginnings of the addition. In the next picture, you can see the, you know, from aerial view, the retention ponds. And in the next one, you can see it all coming together where the road will go around the school, the retention ponds, and the beginning of that first addition to Hillview Elementary on the end of that one lane. Lancaster Middle School. Over at the middle school, the middle school will turn 100 years old this September. It was built in 1922, and this building needs, needed millions and millions of dollars of work. We began work in this building in 2020, and work will conclude this summer. Work this summer includes art room renovations, full renovations of family and consumer science classrooms, hallway renovations, including flooring, ceilings, lighting, and painting, replacement of hallway doors, additional security camera, cameras, renovations in stairwells, including handrails, doors, ceilings, and stair treads, renovations to toilet rooms, replacement of all stage rigging and theatrical lighting, gym floor striping and logo. Gym floor was done last year. So to give you a flavor of what that looks like right now, don't worry, it won't look like that in September, right, Joe? No? He always promises me that, and he's always been right. But done listen to the third floor bathroom, and this is just one of many bathrooms. But that's what it looks like right now, all of that will be replaced and gutted and done. Obviously, an old, old building that needed a lot of work. The next picture is a picture of the first floor bathroom and the stairwell renovations. The next is auditorium. So if you take a look at that auditorium, you've been in that auditorium. Last year is when we finished that auditorium, it was all redone, brand-new seats and, was that two years ago? I'm sorry. What? Two years ago. All brand-new seats, all redone, looks gorgeous, the new speakers and, you know, the whole kit and caboodle, looks great. That screen right there is because behind that screen, the stage is being abated. The next slide is the stage behind it, abated and redone. And that all the stage rigging and everything will be redone. We're here at the high school, that stage right there was done three years ago? Can't remember all this stuff, but anyway, that stage is redone and the rigging and all that, all that stuff was done as well. So we're moving on to the middle school, making sure that we complete that project. The next slide is the band room ceiling, and that's being demoed and redone over at the middle school. And another example of the second floor bathroom, the other one that you saw was the third floor bathroom, but this is an example of a second floor bathroom. And first floor stairwell frame and removal. That's, all those stairwells are being redone in that particular area. The next slide is the gym floor. It's a whole, completely brand-new gym floor over at the middle school, like our gym floor here at the high school. And the logo has just been put on, on that one a couple days ago. Lancaster High School. Lancaster High School is, well, Lancaster Schools is the fourth-largest school district in Western New York. People don't believe that or know that, but it is. And Lancaster High School itself, with almost 2,000 students, is larger than most school districts in Western New York. Work on this building began in 2013 and continues each and every year when the New York State Maximum Cost Allowance rules allow. The renovations at the high school this summer of '22 include replacement of heating systems in the 1969 wing of the building, renovations to science rooms, renovations to family and consumer science rooms, mechanical replacements at the fieldhouse, flooring replacements and ceiling lighting replacements in classrooms. Due to lead time, some of these projects may extend into the summer, a little past the summer because of just waiting on supply chain and those things. because of just waiting on supply chain and those things, but we're hopeful. So the next slide is an example of just three rooms, you know, just took three pictures of rooms that are being abated or gutted or redone. The next slide is second floor, you know, monitors and abatement pieces. And the next slide is ceilings that are being removed. And you can tell that those are science classrooms, and those will all be redone and beautiful by the time school starts. And finally, Lancaster High School Fieldhouse. It's getting mechanical work and air unit handlers and those kind of things to make the experience better. As you know, probably experienced, we had a whole new floor and that whole facility was redone a couple of years ago. And now we're just adding the other pieces to make it complete. So that's the update so far, two weeks into, you know, construction here, two thousand twenty-two. And I'll give you an update when we're all done, either in September or October. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Valley. Onto eighteen point oh, old business. Does anyone have any old business to discuss? Nineteen point oh, new business. Nineteen point one, personnel items. Nineteen point one point one, can I have a motion to appoint the assistant principal? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Is Mrs. Hanky here? And Dr. Mark Ullman, do you have a few words?
We're excited to welcome Bethany Hanky to the William Street Elementary team. Bethany, who lives with her husband and two children, impressed all the members of the committee from the first time we met. The committee consisted of administrators, teachers, a PTO board member, a secretary, and students who conducted tours and walked with the candidates and interviewed them informally. Bethany comes to us from Warsaw Elementary School. At Warsaw, she was an instructional coach. She worked with teachers to improve their instruction and student outcomes. She was then a TOSA Dean of Students and was later promoted to Assistant Principal. As Assistant Principal, she focused on using data and NTSS to identify strengths and needs of both her students and the school. She was also a proponent of using restorative practices as a disciplinary approach. This highlights her dedication to being a child advocate. It became clear in our conversations and from her resume that she is skilled at developing strong relationships with students, parents, the community, and of course, the faculty and staff. She believes in creating a positive and enjoyable climate based on respect and caring, and we could not be more thrilled that she is joining us at William Street.
Thank you, Dr. Merkule. And welcome. We cannot wait to see all the things that you do over at William Street. Onto nineteen point one point two, can I have a motion for the personnel changes? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Any new hires present at the board meeting today? Go ahead and stand up. I've got a great story. So I met Mrs. Mulga at a Dollar Tree in October, and I think she was a substitute at that point. And I saw she was buying just a grocery cart full of Halloween supplies, right? And I said, this has to be a teacher. And sure enough, I talked to her, she indeed was a teacher. And now it's, you know, my pleasure to see you as a teacher hired here at Lancaster. So congratulations. Nineteen point two, education items. Nineteen point two point one, can I have a motion on the committee on special education? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Nineteen point two point two, can I have a motion on the committee on preschool special education? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty point zero, business and financial items. Twenty point one, can I have a motion on the financial reports? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty point two, can I have a motion on the, actually, this is gonna be for information only. This is policy first reading thirty-two twenty, use of service animals. Twenty point three, can I have a motion on the surplus textbooks? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twelve point four, can I have a motion on the contract of Lancaster youth football and cheerleading for storage? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twelve point five, can I have a motion on the contract of Lancaster youth football and cheerleading for facility use? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty point six, can I have a motion on the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three food service operating budget? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty point seven, can I have a motion on the partial payment of taxes? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twelve point eight, can I have a motion on the food service operating reports? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twelve point nine, can I have a motion on the bid award for transportation parts? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty point ten, can I have a motion on the bid award for printing? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty point eleven, can I have a motion on the construction change orders? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty point twelve, can I have a motion on the AIA contract with Young &amp; Right Architectural? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty point thirteen on another AIA contract with Young &amp; Right Architectural, can I have a motion? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty point fourteen, can I have a motion on the surplus equipment? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty point fifteen, can I have a motion on the Auctions International Agreement? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty point sixteen, can I have a motion on the YMCA agreement? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty point seventeen, can I have a motion on the contract extension for Excelsior? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty point eighteen, can I have a motion on the contract with Buffalo Construction Consultants? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty point nineteen, can I have a motion on the identification approval? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty point twenty, can I have a motion on the agreement with Stark Tech? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty point twenty-one, can I have a motion on the contract with Alden Central School District? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty point twenty-two, can I have a motion on the contract, Sound Transformations Music Therapy Services? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty point twenty-three, can I have a motion on the auction results? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty point twenty-four, can I have a motion on the contract with visually impaired advancement? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries? Twenty-one point oh is our public hearing. Any person who notified the district clerk per Policy fifteen fourteen may speak at this time. Speakers must first be recognized by the president and then identify themselves by stating their name and address. The time limit to speak will be limited to five minutes per person. For our public hearing, welcome to all who have come to observe this meeting this evening. This is a time set aside for our public hearing, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Again, each person is given up to five minutes in which to address the board. This is a meeting in public rather than a public meeting, which means we're not going to be engaging in any dialogue with members of the community this evening. But rest assured, we are listening carefully and we take seriously what you have to say. I would like to ask you to demonstrate respect for us and one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas, sharing your opinions, but not engaging in any personal attack. Additionally, please note, as a public school district, we are bound by various laws, regulations, and policies regarding the privacy of students and staff, including the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. Moreover, board policy prohibits public commenting on any topic directly or indirectly related to employee personnel information or any topic that potentially may disclose information about a particular student. Accordingly, please do not comment on the performance or conduct of individual staff members and/or specific confidential student-related matters. This policy will be strictly enforced, and anyone violating the policy will be barred from addressing the board in the future. Thank you for your cooperation. First tonight, we have Kelly Hartwig. Mrs. Hartwig?
Good evening. My name is Kelly Hartwig, and I live at twenty-one Americal Court. I spoke at a prior Board of Education meeting a few months ago requesting two things on behalf of the students in the Lancaster community. I understand that the Board of Education will be meeting in August to discuss the twenty-twenty-three capital plans and the topics of recreational equipment. And baseball and softball fields will also be up for discussion. My goal today is to reinforce why these need to happen and why they need to happen immediately. First, you all know the reasons as to why we are asking for recreational equipment for the middle and William Street schools. The benefits are immense, and other parents who will follow me will speak to these. I'd like to respond to three points that were made to me after the initial meeting. The first explanation as to why no recreational equipment was currently available at these schools was because parents have never asked for them. So while I've had discussions with parents and PTO members that have said otherwise, that's not enough to plead my case. So I created a survey monkey that was shared through social media school PTO pages and was answered by two hundred and ten parents in the Lancaster community. Results were over ninety-six point seven percent responded that we need recreational equipment for the students at both schools and that this should be paid for with existing school funds. Eighty-nine percent answered it needed to be done immediately. I shared those results with you all this morning through email. Second was space at the middle school. I shared with the Board of Education the space that appears to be currently available, which is called the flats, that has more than enough free space to add recreation. Third, a response that I received was that parents should fundraise. I've spoken to multiple PTO members that stated that this is not possible and frankly, nor should it be the responsibility of the parents. This is what our school taxes and school budgets should be used for, as with other school districts. Every student in Lancaster will attend these schools, so every student would benefit. Second topic is baseball and softball fields. There are some parents here that will speak on behalf of the hundred and twenty students that play for one of the seven school teams that represent Lancaster schools. I asked why the school district would invest, or sorry, I was asked why the school district would invest money in fixing these fields, as the season is only two months long. Well, the season should be three months long if it were to start in March, if the fields were playable. And frankly, every student, or every sports season is approximately two to three months long. And like all the other sports, baseball and softball need playable fields. In two thousand eighteen, the Capital Plan brochure, the district stated the following reasons as to why turf fields were needed for field hockey, soccer, lacrosse, and marching band. First, drainage on the current field has historically been a problem. Second, this will allow students to practice and compete on a safer surface. Third, this allows our athletes to compete on the same level as neighboring schools. Four, maintenance costs will be cheaper. Five, a positive reputation which enhances our community's real estate values. Six, investing in infrastructure will benefit every student, parent, and community member. And seven, will improve the quality of our life in our community, the town, and the recreational programs. For all of these exact same reasons, we need to fix our baseball and softball fields. For most players, they will hit their peak in high school. Playing for high school is something they've worked years towards, and our players deserve the opportunity to play in front of their peers at home like every other sports team. If you're gonna fix basketball courts, tennis courts, lacrosse and soccer fields, then you need to fix the softball and baseball fields. They are by far in the worst condition of all fields, and this was confirmed by your high school's main grounds employee. This spring will be ten years since the varsity baseball fields have been, quote, "fixed with new dirt and a new pitching mound." The other fields, which were placed down at the bottom of a hill, those have not been fixed to the knowledge of him since before he started working in two thousand and six. These fields are not, they're not safe for our employees. So we need to bring all of the Lancaster sports teams home so they have the ability to play at one fort and drive, just like everybody else. And the goal should be to fix these fields by two thousand twenty-five. Our freshman boys had an undefeated season last year and were ten and two this season. So we firmly believe they are going to be a state contender in two thousand twenty-five. The two softball fields, another parent will speak to those in a few minutes. Reasons as to why I was told these projects could not be paid for with existing school funds. First, capital funds are being used for needs and not wants. Dr. Valley just talked to you guys about all the things that are being done. I could argue that some of the recently executed projects with the same funds would be considered wants and not needs, but I'll save that for another time. Second reason, can't use a hundred and twenty-two million yearly budget. We are one of the most fiscally responsible districts in the area and spending close to that least amount of money on each student. So looking at the business first, it shows that our average expenditure per student is around seventeen thousand five hundred. That puts us at the bottom of all of the schools, most of the schools in the area. We would argue as parents, why would we choose to pay more money to send our kids to a premium school district? to send our kids to a premium school district and to see that our kids don't get at least the minimum of what our neighboring school districts get? If we were to add $2,000 per student to bring us up to 19, which was a little bit more equal to what some of the neighboring school districts have, that would be roughly 10 million extra dollars that we could spend on our students. Third reason, can't use the 5 million in reserves as this is saved for emergencies. Well, I would argue that the state's largest elementary school with over 1,200 students not having any recreational equipment for recess could be considered an emergency. Being the smartest kid doesn't always make for the most successful adults. Kids learn how to be leaders, work together, and be creative during a real recess. I have looked at capital plans from school districts that are comparable to us by size, income, graduation rates, and I've shared them with some of you. I have discovered that these, like districts, have playgrounds, basketball courts, all-weather playfields, and turf fields for their sports. If we truly want to live up to our district's motto of "second to none," then we need to add these projects to our to-do list immediately, no matter what budget it comes from. The town has extended a request to have a meeting to discuss partnering on a playspace at William Street. If a budget is an issue, then why hasn't the district agreed to meet with them? It should be our goal to make the community better for our kids. I want to emphasize that we should not have to wait another five to seven years. The kids who have moved on from these schools, unfortunately, did not benefit from what neighboring schools have or will soon have, but the existing kids, existing and future kids at Lancaster should. Thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Chris Harper. Dr. Harper. Third, we have Keith Fratz.
Good evening. My name is Keith Fratz. I'm under the 12th Cleveland job. I am here on behalf of all current and future Lancaster softball teams. One month ago today, the varsity softball team suffered a heartbreaking 4-3 loss while representing the community at States. Unfortunately, a contributing factor in that loss was the substandard softball facilities at Lancaster High School, something no Lancaster team should have to overcome. Educational buzzwords include equality, opportunity, and safety. Sadly, here in Lancaster, there seem to be important, only one convenient. I will start with equity. As this year's team prepared to leave for States, a police escort for the bus to the 90 was arranged. Citing lack of equality, high school administrators canceled it as other athletes and teams did not receive the same. If equality is the goal, I understand. However, if equality is the goal, why does it not apply to playing fields? Over the past few years, Lancaster has built a new track, a new gym, installed new lights on the football field, upgraded the pool, and is now installing an all-purpose field. I support this upgrade, but why aren't all fields being done like other districts have done? The longer we wait, the more it will cost. Also at issue is new upgrades negatively impacting other sports. 30 years ago, the varsity softball stadium had lights, not today. When the fieldhouse was built, the softball field was moved and now sits on the lowest point on a high school property. The all-purpose field is being installed because, quote, "drainage on the current soccer field has historically been an issue." So now we're going to have the well-draining field at a higher elevation than the softball and baseball fields, which already have their own drainage issues. As for opportunity, over the last six years, Lancaster softball has had 17 girls go on to play in college. Of the 20 girls who played varsity the last two years, seven are playing or are committed to play in college. This scheme provides great opportunity to the girls of the district. Why are they not being supported? As I speak, three... Well, they're probably done now. Three 12-team teams comprising primarily Lancaster residents are competing at Alden Ponds. They'll be the next year's modified team that will carry on this tradition. I hope they do not have to carry on the tradition of substandard fields and inability to practice outside until playoffs. Finally, safety. If you follow the softball team on Twitter, you would have seen hashtag GSOD. This stands for Greatest Sport on Dirt. Unfortunately, the high school's schedule starts at the end of March, when mud is far more prevalent than dirt. Rain is common, leading to non-league softball and baseball games being canceled, not rescheduled. Having turf fields for all teams would allow all home games to be played at home, unlike currently when home games are moved to other schools that have turf. This does not happen in any other sport, yet improvements to the softball and baseball fields are still years off instead of a priority. Because we do not have turf, games are not moved. They are jammed into the last few weeks of the season when our field is finally playable. This administration has written that having a turf field is a matter of safety. Are we not concerned with the safety of softball and baseball players? And what about liability should someone get hurt in poor conditions, like the final two innings of our league game against Hamburg that was played in a downpour so that we could, quote, "get the game in"? Our current fields put these teams at a competitive disadvantage. Not practicing outdoors severely limits outfield practice for one. In addition, all sectional, final, regional, and state competitions are played on turf. The game is much faster played on turf. This speed difference was a contributing factor to our loss at States. In closing, the 2017 softball team was ranked number one in New York State. Their playoff game was moved to Clarence's turf field because of poor conditions at Lancaster. They lost that game. They lost that game. The number-one team in New York State had to play an earned home playoff game on the road. That should never happen. Yet the area stands today, five years later, and softball still does not have a field equal to their competition and is still a risk of having history repeat itself. It is a situation that needs to be rectified now. Thank you.
Next, we have Carrie Miller.
Hello, my name is Carrie Miller. I'm a parent of four students in Lancaster, between third and eighth grade, so they have William Street and Lancaster Middle. I'm actually going to be reading two letters from parents who are in the district, but unfortunately cannot attend tonight's meeting but feel strongly about the need for recreational equipment. The first one. William Street School was completed in 1998. That's over two decades ago. An entire generation where young kids have been deprived of a playground and other outdoor playspaces. The benefits of a playground isn't new information. Some of these benefits include: increases a child's ability to focus, reduces anxiety and depression in a child, and encourages social interaction among students, leading to better developed social skills. I feel... Now, Mrs. Bailey's speaking. I feel it's not the parent's responsibility to beg for basic developmental educational equipment at these schools. It is the school district's responsibility to know what is the best for our children and to provide it. And the second letter is actually from a friend of mine who has a student in Lancaster with special needs. Dear school board members, I am sorry I cannot be here this evening to read my statement, but I appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts and experiences as the parent of a Lancaster child with multiple disabilities. It is no mystery that play is integral in the school day. Studies have confirmed higher test scores and less discipline issues for students with access to regular recess breaks. But I would like to explain why access to playground play is an important inclusion issue for students with disabilities. William Street teachers do the best they can with sidewalk games and sidewalk chalk. But for neurodivergent kids who have a difficult time with social interaction, the lack of a playground means outdoor time is frequently just an extension of the social isolation of the classroom. Playgrounds are a conduit for play that neurodivergent kids need. Swings and climbing areas provide a space where tics and stim behaviors are just a part of regular movement. For kids who spend every moment of every day knowing all too well how different they are from their peers, an inclusion playground provides equal access to the childhood interactions we all want for every child. When people think of inclusive playgrounds, they think of physical accessibility. All playgrounds should be wheelchair accessible and playground equipment should be fun for everyone. But inclusive playgrounds are more than specialty swings and wheelchair-friendly ground covering. Inclusive playgrounds provide equitable access to the educational experience by helping students expend energy and create social capital in a healthy and productive way. If you are not the parent or guardian of a neurodivergent child, you probably would have or have not had to spend just as much time practicing social skills as you do multiplication tables. You may not have watched your child go weeks without having a single classroom peer in direction. You probably have not had teachers complain about stim movements that happen too frequently in the classroom. And I hope you have not had to comfort your child because, once again, their classmates have noticed symptoms of their disability in the class and called them weird. If you are not the parent or guardian of a neurodivergent child, you might not realize that this is what school is like for many children in the district, but I assure you it is. Appropriate playspaces may not solve all educational woes, but they can help bridge the social gap for many children who are currently being left behind. Thank you.
I don't normally respond during public hearings. However, you know, 2017, May 25th, you brought that up, and I caught the eye of Coach Delfonzo there. That was a tough day. All four sports teams were going to play that day, girls lacrosse, boys lacrosse, baseball, and softball. I even tweeted out how cool that was going to be to have all four sports teams going at the same time. You know, as you mentioned, the girls had to go to Clarence. So did the boys. They had to play Will North on Clarence's turf, and you know, that was a year for both softball and baseball. So we constantly think about these things.